Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing nobody else recording this meeting, if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing no citizens to comment, we will move on to the Student Representatives Report. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we closed out December strong. We had a spirit week. I can't remember any of the actual spirit days to save my life right now. However, the teachers did, they started this tradition last year of decorating their doors very elaborately to do Christmas. However, after the fire marshal told us that's fire hazard, they then decorated the lockers. Some of them stretch from classroom to classroom, and a ton of teachers participated in it to help bring in holidays. Following our holiday break, we had, really, last week was kind of a stupor where nobody was that awake from vacation yet. This week, everything else has really started to pick up. Stu Coe had their first meeting, reconvening from the holiday break. However, before the holidays, had a spaghetti dinner. I haven't heard the results of how they did with that. And also, before the holiday break, the Tour Day Auburn was the last day of school as tradition, and Model UN had their St. John's Conference on December 9th, I believe. And Ally wanted me to report that on January 16th, Rockets Rockets Holding their ice skating trip, they've raised over $500 in tickets for Rockets Rockets. That was her last number, she said, and that's just a round off the top of the head. And also, the band and chorus are continually fundraising for their trip, which is going to be St. Patrick's Day weekend. Their last fundraising effort was Toll Road, but I believe there's a skateboarding this weekend.
Wow. Lot going on.
Yeah.
So, when you say everyone was still half asleep, does that go for the teachers and administration as well, or is it just the students?
Just the students.
Tell us the truth.
Just the students, just the teachers understand they won't be able to get us to do much work.
All right, good. And they probably don't want to get you to do so much work. That's great. Well, tell Ally that I apologize for having changed the date of the meeting and for her having to miss it, and we appreciate your report. Excellent, as usual.
Thank you.
And how were your holidays?
They were good, other than I got a stomach bug for Christmas, so it was a painful day.
Yeah.
You and Hasselhoff.
Yep. Well, hopefully the new year started out a little better.
Yep, it definitely did.
Great. Any questions or comments for Ryan?
No, just thank you. You always do such a good job. Appreciate it.
An excellent job, and if you feel like you have to go for any reason, even a made-up one, feel free to just cut up and take off.
All right.
Thank you for that report. I would now seek approval of the minutes for December 5th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve December 5th minutes?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. We now move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Brunel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I start with the report here, I actually just wanted to let you know I left a couple of the brochures at your seats that you can share. Today was the Superintendent Scholars Lunch in Worcester County Superintendent, so Mr. Handfield, Jared Sargent, and myself went. It was a great event at Holy Cross. We had Dr. Bellagio, who addressed the crowd, and it was really a great event, and all of us superintendents and principals leave thinking we should have done more when we were in high school. I know Ryan's activities and things that he does, it's just incredibly impressive what our kids do, so, really a great day.
Very nice brochure, too, with a picture of all of them and a quote from each of them, and, yeah, that's very, very nice.
Very nice. So, with regard to the report, wanted to make you aware, Mr. Fahey has been asked, he's serving as the representative for the School Department, the town is seeking a Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, and this grant is outlined in here. It's really to support towns in helping to build resiliency around some key climate change adaptation actions. So, they've had an initial meeting. They're going to be meeting again on February 28th. They're going to be inviting approximately 40 citizens from across Auburn to participate in the work and be part of four different teams. Also exciting is we've got some students from our student government class, Julie and Nicole Lazona, Shay Brown and Angie Davis, who are going to also spend the day with them, February 28th. They're going to be taking some notes and really learning firsthand how local government works, so I think it'll be a beneficial day for all. Another plan that's in the works, Mark Moss is the Emergency Management Director for the town, and he indicated to Town Manager Jacobson that the local comprehensive emergency management plan needs to be updated over the next couple of months, so there's going to be representatives from across the community. I will be serving on this team with others from the fire, police, DPW, inspectional services, and IT in our first meeting, although it was supposed to be planned for this morning due to the potential for some inclement weather. It's been postponed until Thursday, so I'll keep you apprised on how that goes. A little bit more locally, the MSBA, they conduct, I think I had shared with you before, a post-occupancy, they're doing a pilot program. They're actually going to come out to Auburn Middle School on January 23rd. Mr. Fahey, Mrs. Worzwicki, and I will be there, as well as Mr. Desto and Mr. Carlson, so they want to come and tour the facility and ask us some questions about the processes we went through, so I think we all are extremely proud of how it looks, and now with the HVAC issue and everything completely cleared up, I think we're really pleased with it overall. So, we'll keep you apprised of that, but we're excited to show it off to MSBA. We did receive, or Swanson did receive, I should say, a grant or donation in the amount of $5,000 to be used towards the Swanson Arboretum, and that came from the Arthur and Martha Pappas Foundation. So, Sarah Cannell, the media specialist at Swiss, who does an awful lot of work and has with the Arboretum, she actually wrote the grant, and it is my recommendation that you accept that amount of money, and I will keep you apprised, but the main intention for its use is landscaping expenses for the arboretum.
Great. I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the grant amount $5,000 from the Arthur and Martha Pappas Foundation for landscaping expenses at the Swiss Arboretum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That's just wonderful, $5,000. It should go a long way.
It should, it should. They've done a lot of work on that over the past few years, the chair.
They're just always looking to help out the town, help out the schools.
Yeah.
And to the chair, a cuse to Mr. Cannell for taking the initiative to go out and, you know, find the money. That's fantastic.
I'm sure it's going to be beautiful when we're done, and if we need to incorporate some more help from Bay, don't hesitate to reach out.
Definitely.
Not that I have any pull, but we'll see what we can do. That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
The next item is a request. Mrs. Heidemann has several times over the years taken a group of students to visit the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Library Museum in Hyde Park, New York. It is her request to do so again on May 24th this spring, and it is my recommendation that you approve that.
I would entertain that motion.
Recommend a motion to approve the AHS AP US History Students Trip to the FDS Library and Museum in Hyde Park in May of 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That's a wonderful place to visit. I'm sure they'll enjoy it. It's really amazing, everything he accomplished.
Great educational opportunity.
And then, to the chair, I just have a question. This is just a day trip, correct? They're just down and back in a day.
Correct, yes.
Be a long day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
The next item, you actually had rescinded some authorizations in the past that weren't needed, and in looking at working with the town regarding a new bond report official statement, there are two authorizations out there that Mr. Casanova, which has requested, I bring to you for your approval to rescind. The first one is for the Auburn Middle School Project. If you'll recall, back when it first saw approval from the town, the town needed to authorize the full cost, the $44 million cost for the new school, with the understanding, however, that MSBA was going to reimburse 54.16% of eligible costs. So, this is an authorization on the books that is not needed. MSBA has closed out the middle school, so I'm comfortable recommending to you that you rescind that authorization, as it's not needed, and the school is fully paid for. The second one is similar to that. This is for the roof projects. If you remember, we did the accelerated repair for Swanson, Bryn Mawr, and Packerchog. So, in total, $3,24,153 also is an authorization that's not needed, again, because MSBA paid 54.16% of the eligible cost. So, in total, with our partnership with MSBA, it saved the town of Auburn or through their grant program, well over $26 million, which is great partnership with them. So, it is my recommendation that you approve the rescinding of each.
I would entertain a motion for number one.
I make a motion to approve the rescinding of the authorization of $23,925,234 for Auburn Middle School Building Project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote, and I would entertain that second motion.
I make a motion to approve the rescinding of the authorization of $3,024,153 for the roof repair project at Swanson Road Intermediate, Bryn Mawr, and Packerchog.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you. The next item is Student Government Day. So, Senator Moore recently notified us that the 72nd Annual Student Government Day will take place on Friday, April 5th, the State House. In the past, we have students that go down, generally Mr. Bonancio, Mr. Kennard, undetermined at this point who will go, but the students going from the high school are Alexis McGrath and Madison Poschkis, so we will invite them to a school committee meeting after April 5th to share with us about their experience, but two great representatives to head down for us.
Sounds great, I agree. Any comments?
Is this one they take on the roles of some of the people in our government, like the governor vice in the state?
They do go down, and they do some role-playing, yes, they do, they do.
Okay. I hope one of them gets to be the governor.
The next item, as you do regularly, so the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Quarterly Report is included in your packet. That is for this school year, the second report, and then also included for you, there are copies at your seats of the annual report for the 1718 school year, and that one is a bound standalone item, and really, as I think I've shared in the past, really highlights, and that's been indicative of this executive director, the very student-focused, so there's some very good things that are happening here. So, you do need to vote to accept it, not necessarily to approve it.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the first quarter report for the 2018-2019 school year of the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, as well as the annual report for 2017-2018 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
So, the next item, Mass Association of School Superintendents has some initiatives underway. One is a video that I'm going to have Mrs. Artner turn on in just a moment. They created it titled "A Tale of Two Sisters," and it will show two sisters who are educators in Massachusetts in two very different communities, and the reason that they've created this, as well as the forums, there was one that was held last night in Fitchburg and in three other locations across the state, is to really try to bring attention to the fact that the foundation budget, which drives the Chapter 70 monies, really needs to be reviewed. It was 25 years ago when Ed Reform first came into play in 1993, and the foundation formula really has not kept pace with that. Now, we are fortunate in Auburn that we have ample support, you know, from the community, but I think that, you know, even if we look at our special education funding with Circuit Breaker, the health insurance reimbursement, but particularly special ed is one area of note, that we could certainly benefit from more Chapter 70 monies. So, there is, we believe, a strong movement underfoot from legislators to really try and amp up the Chapter 70 monies that we get, so we will have a better sense when the governor puts out his budget in late January, and then following that will be the House and Senate, and then ultimately go through Ways and Means, but this video, I think, was really well-done. They showed it at the, actually, the Executive Committee of MASSS the week we were down at the School Committee Superintendent Conference, so they've shortened it.
We saw that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Did you see it?
We did see it.
Oh, you did all see it? Okay. Were one sister's in Brockton and struggling to...
And the one in Burlington.
And the one in Burlington has everything she needs.
Yes.
Eye-opening.
It was kind of, wow.
It was, it was. I didn't realize that you had seen that, I'm sorry. So, they shortened it a bit, so it's up to you whether we want to even, if you want to air it. It's eight minutes and 50 seconds.
Dorothy, you haven't seen it, and I don't think, I don't think eight minutes is too much for the general public to maybe have a look at it, and then get to see it over and over again.
Right.
Welcome to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, where we pride ourselves on having one of the best public education systems in the country. This is a place where we hold a truth to be self-evident, that all children, regardless of ethnicity or religion, income or zip code, are endowed by this Commonwealth with a certain unalienable right to an equitable foundational education. But what if I told you this foundation of equity has become meaningless? What if I told you that while all communities here in the Commonwealth are held to the same high academic performance standards, not all communities are able to provide equal tools to achieve these goals, and that this inequity is oftentimes based on zip code alone? What if I introduced you to two educators, two sisters, both teaching children in public schools, but in different zip codes, and because of these zip codes, work in vastly different realities? Let me tell you a tale of two sisters. Laura Phillips is an art teacher at Marshall Simons Middle School in Burlington.
Right, so he's got to be around this, that shirt will be shaved.
I've been super lucky. Everything I need is provided by my school system. The district basically provides everything, from pencils to notebooks to art materials. It affects my teaching because I'm not worried about the kids not having anything, I'm not worried about the kids that can't afford it, the kids that can afford it, you know, they might bring in extra things, but everyone is equal.
Laura's boss is Dr. Eric Conti, Superintendent of the Burlington Public Schools. Burlington has a $60 million budget, 3,500 students, and spends $17,200 per year per student.
Teaching's a very complex job, and I think you get better over time. There's a cost to turnover, and I've been happy that we've been able to maintain our staffing levels and keep people in the job, get them trained up, so we can provide the highest-performing professionals to work with our children across the community. We have a very active business community that's very supportive of the schools. Our Chamber of Commerce is, couldn't be more supportive. We have an education foundation that provides fundraisers every year, provides opportunity for innovation.
But this is a story of two teachers, not one. Remember, not all teachers are as fortunate as Laura. One such teacher is Laura's sister, Karen Kavanaugh.
One of the models that we've had in Brockton the last couple of years is that we do more with less, and every year we're asked to do more with less. For classroom supplies, every year, I buy my class all my own notebooks with my own money, because I know some of my students can't afford them, and they're not reimbursed. My kids are at a disadvantage because we don't have all those resources. Because of budget cuts, I've changed grades so many times, so forming a collegial base in a strong cooperative learning environment, the person that you worked with last year might not be the person you'll work with next year. So, from my standpoint as a teacher, I am not looking for more than what anybody else gets, I'm looking for the same. So, if I'm held to the same standards, I should have the same materials, supplies, support.
Karen's boss is Dr. Kathleen Smith, Superintendent of the Brockton Public Schools. Brockton has a $260 million budget and nearly 18,000 students. Brockton spends just $14,000 per year per student.
Eighty teachers were laid off because of budget cuts. Little by little, we have watched a reduction in Chapter 70 funding throughout the state. Funding that was supposed to provide an adequate education for every child, no matter the zip code, has now been reduced when we're spending, and this is not just Brockton. Additional funding for special education mandates, which our children need. Additional funding for health insurance that we have to provide to all our employees. Inflation rates that are out of control, you know, spending for professional development with the mandates that our teachers face, and making sure that we are leading the nation, we are number one, we provide a rigorous curriculum. All of that, while funds in Brockton over the past five years, we have been cutting, cutting, cutting. For some districts, they are able to go above and beyond once they meet foundation. If they want to bring one-to-one devices throughout the district, they're able to put an extra million, an extra $2 million, et cetera, into their budget to be able to support those initiatives with the new high-stakes testing coming in. When you're talking about your urban districts and your gateway cities, we do not have that opportunity. What we now have is a district trying to keep their head above water.
The disparities between these two school systems are not an anomaly. The lack of equitable support for students stems from an outdated educational funding formula that was adopted in 1993. Laura and Karen recently sat down to discuss the differences in their schools.
Kids are making decisions in middle school now, you know, do I go to a tech school, or do I go to, you know, the public school or private school, and it's important that the school provide everybody with equal opportunities. And we don't even have materials to do great things. Right. So, it's unfair. It's like every student should have the same, they should all be able to have the specials that may go all around, you know, students. Same experiences, if it's a public school and it's the same state, we all should have the same. It's not fair to the kids in my school. We have great kids here, and they're not given all the opportunities that we present themselves for them to make a good choice of what to do for a career, to prepare for a job, just to be prepared even for college. You know, every day coming to school knowing that this is a great place to be and that... You're not worrying your job's going to be a winner at the end of the year. Right. For the first time, I got a new colleague, and it's because someone retired. And I have complete new teams for the last four years. That's horrible. Think about that for a moment. You wouldn't use Windows 3.1 on an Apple IIe computer today, yet Massachusetts continues to fund public education on a formula created in 1993. And let's not forget today's health insurance costs, costs that exceed the 1993 formula's projections by 140%. And while some communities, like Burlington, have been fortunate enough to supplement their budgets with local funding, many, like Brockton, have not. This has created significant inequity in both the education and opportunity for all students. It is something that Dr. Conti and the entire membership of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents strongly believes needs to be fixed now.
Massachusetts is in the place that it's in nationally because of the work that was done 25 years ago, and that brought together lawmakers, educators, the business community to make significant changes in the school funding formula, standards, assessment, and governance. Public schools were really reshaped, and we're reaping the benefits of that. We have to have another effort like that for the next 25 years. Reshaping the funding formula for schools is the foundation of that work. If anything, what we've learned over the last 25 years is investing in children in the Commonwealth pays off every time. Please, please, let's make sure that we provide all students across the Commonwealth, all communities across the Commonwealth, a realistic foundation for them to provide a high-quality education that continues to keep Massachusetts' families and children and our economy performing at the level that it's been performing.
Not that bright. Just kidding. Well, that's sad.
It is.
Really is. The children have no idea that they're not even getting a fair shake. They just don't. They just go to school and want to learn and hope for the best, and their parents probably aren't able to defend, and so it's sad. I'm glad the state is willing to take a look at it.
Yeah, they're working through the chair. I think that there's hope that there is going to be some movement this year with this, so hopefully that's the case, bring some equity.
How long do you think it would take to actually rewrite the formula?
You know, I think, I don't know. I think that even if they make some steps in the right direction to bring some monies there, it really would take a full rewrite of it, I think, quite honestly. So, if you remember, a few years ago, I was on a committee, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, they came out with some recommendations of areas to start with, in special education and health insurance were the two top priority areas, so if they tackle those, and one thing we realize is that some communities will get less and others will get more, but the idea is to try and balance, so that way, and the other goal is to hold all districts harmless, that no one's goes down, and they may not get as much of an increase in things, so... But I know that, you know, even just this past weekend on one of the Sunday news stations, one of the new representatives leaders in the House was talking about really wanting to take up education reform and education funding, so hopefully it will, hopefully it'll get some traction.
That would be good.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, we now move on to unfinished business.
So, if you recall, the end of last year, I shared with you about a complaint that had come forward through regarding our website, and then I shared with you that it had been dropped by them, but in that time, they had let us know that they would still probably do some monitoring of things, and I'm happy to report, as noted in Mr. Bouvier's response or memo to me, we went through, we have a new website, we have a new student management information system, and ADA compliance was one of the priority areas that was identified when we selected our vendors. So, we are in great shape. We actually, as part of the service fee that we pay, they're constantly monitoring to make sure that everything, in fact, does remain compliant. The only area of challenge is the PDF documents, so we're currently, as a leadership team, looking through those documents. We have 349 such PDFs on our site to look to see if we do, in fact, need all of those, and if we do, then we would pay a fee to have them go through, and really, it involves, Mr. Bouvier was sharing with all of us, it's a pretty intricate process that needs to go through, and you just scan through everything, so it would be well worth the money. So, our intention is, prior to them commencing what they call a directed investigation, this is happening across the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Commencing on May 15th, that we would have all of that work up and done, so it is a priority for us to make sure that we're fully compliant, and we are very close to being so, nearly completely so, and that should be happening very soon, but I wanted to make you aware that we will, once they come out, I will keep you apprised of what their response is.
Great. Thank you.
In terms of the 2020 draft budget, so as you'll recall, back on November 14th, we recommended a budget to you of $26,909,863, which represented a 4.1% increase over the 2019 approved amount. We were recently notified that a student who is not in our district is currently in an out-of-district placement due to a residency change. There are currently two towns that are splitting the cost for the out-of-district placement. With the residency change, Auburn now will take half of that cost, and then the other, the other community will take the other half. Because this change happened after April 1st, there's a regulation out there that if it happens after April 1st, the sending district is responsible because they would have budgeted for it, so we're not responsible for it this year, but we will be next year. So, in light of that, I'm recommending that we increase the draft budget that would go forward to Town Manager Jacobson to $27,34,862.54. That actually embeds in there the $125,000 increase. Whereas I shared with you earlier when we were just talking about budget, the, it's a long way to May before we actually have our town meeting. We, as a leadership team, met just, we meet regularly, but last week, and we're looking at, you know, the requests that we had made and put through in this budget, and if you recall, we're looking for a grade-five teacher, a counselor at Swanson, we're looking for ABAs that are required through IEPs, the sharing of a permanent sub between our two primary buildings, and an additional EL tutor at the middle school, and then two social-emotional support professionals. So, we're not asking for that many new staff members, and it is my recommendation at this time... And it is my recommendation at this time that you approve that budget amount. Cecilia, Kathy, and I will meet with Town Manager Jacobson and Mr. Kazanovich, just as we do annually, and go through this and see, and I think that we take a wait-and-see attitude is what comes out from the governor's office. And hopefully, we haven't, Auburn again, seen an enrollment increase. So I think it's likely that we would see a Chapter 70 increase, but to what degree that will be is unknown at this time.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve the draft budget of $27,34,682.54 that would be submitted to the Town Manager by the second Monday in January, which is January 14th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a comment. So this $125,000 for the out-of-plasma for the student is only half of what the cost is?
Correct. It is a residential placement.
Wow.
And this, we will, once we are contributing financially or fiscally to this, we will have a seat at the table. This is a longstanding placement that has been in place, so likely is not going to change.
Right.
But the student is of higher age, that it will likely only be for a couple of years.
But if he becomes, he or she becomes the full responsibility of Auburn, then our assessment would be $250,000?
It would. It would, yes.
Wow.
Yes, it would.
And this student has been in the placement, it's not like a six-month thing, it's been years?
Correct. It has been years. And I will tell you that over the years, and we in Auburn do a really good job, we take our legal responsibility seriously, but ethically too, to keep kids in district where they can.
Sure.
But over the years, in the 11 years, we have had students that have been in out-of-district residential placements with a cost of $250,000 that was borne completely by Auburn.
Wow.
Yeah, it is. They're extraordinary, extraordinary costs.
It certainly is.
Through the chair, the one, you know, we will see in the following year, so we'll pay this money in '20, so in '21, we'll see an increase in our circuit breaker reimbursement fund, but you need to wait a full year after paying it before you see that. And that's been one of those reimbursements that should be at 75 percent, the highest I've ever seen, and that's once you hit a threshold, so you don't get it for the full value.
Right.
The highest I think I've seen it is at 72, but it's been anywhere between the low 60s to low 70s reimbursement. So you pay all that money upfront, first of all.
That's incredible.
It's a lot to ask a district to come up with.
It is. It is.
I guess we really take the care of all our students.
They're not really asking.
No, they're not.
Not at all.
No, we've been told.
Any other comments or questions?
I just think everything else in the budget is so important that we still get that.
Yeah.
We have to ask for additional funding.
All right then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you. So also with regard to our budget, just to make you aware, the school choice numbers, so we used offsets, if you, as you recall, and had anticipated having the same number of students in school choice. We have looked at enrollment figures. We actually will have less students at Auburn Middle School next year, just the way that fifth grade rolls up and eighth grade goes up to the high school, and the high school number stays just about the same. So it is my recommendation, and I will tell you, if you recall over the years, I've done reviews to look at our students, our school choice students, attendance rates, their discipline, their transcripts, and their involvement in extracurricular activities as compared to our Auburn students. And every year, they have done as well, if in some cases even better than, you know, and we've been very fortunate with our school choice students. So it is my recommendation that we stay at that level, but not increases we have the past couple of years.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve school choice at the high school and middle school at the same levels for the 19, 20 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. With the 51 at the high school and the 30 at the middle school, are those mostly openings or are they already filled by current students that are in them?
Through the chair, most of them are filled by current students. So what we had originally done, and it gets thrown off a little bit because when siblings get to come, we tried to keep the same number of students per grade level. It's not exactly the same anymore, again, because of the siblings. So really, what we're probably looking at is adding five new students, four or five new students at the middle school, and an ample, the same number up at the high school. Depends how many are graduating on the classes. So it's probably bringing in eight to 10 new students, the rest are already with us.
So when someone asks about our school choice, the openings are very slim.
They're very small.
Yeah.
Very slim openings, yes.
And the lottery is done to choose them.
Correct. That's required by law.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, exactly. Exactly.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
So just putting this out there for you, typically at the first meeting in February, I bring forward a school calendar for the following school year. So if you have either tonight or at the next meeting, any recommendations, I know that we've done some surveying in the past, and I think the calendar that we have, I heard some positive feedback about the one that's in place this year, but if you have any concerns or ideas, please be sure to share them and we'll bring that forward in February for you. In terms of the, we're just reviewing our substitute rates, and while we are not necessarily required to accept the federal minimum wage, I think it's only reasonable to expect that we would have our subs be paid at least at that rate. So it is my recommendation that for the IA subs, they would go from $11.45 to $12 an hour, and then the ABA subs to go from $11.75 to $12.30. So to keep the same differential, to give them an increase that is warranted and perhaps longer we do.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to increase the sub rates for IAs and ABAs to $12 and $12.30 per hour, respectively.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How are we doing through the chair? How are we doing with subs? Are we, are we able to get them?
We, we struggle, like every district around, I don't know if you saw the article in Sunday's paper. And we, we do recruiting, we put it in our email notifications, we have notices out to a couple of the area colleges, we have tapped our retirees, but it still is, it still is a struggle. And I think that, you know, we have looked at our rates, I didn't ask for our rates for that article, but our rates are as good as or better than some of the local communities, and we really regularly review that and changes are warranted, I bring it forward to you. But it's, I think it's a combination of, we have a really strong economy, a lot of people are working right now that want to. Dr. Luzé does sub trainings at least on a monthly basis to try and bring people in. We oftentimes have some college students who, after a couple of years of college, come in and do some subings, but they're quickly returning to school or will soon be doing so. So it's, it's a struggle. And it's something we talk about as superintendents often, you know, and I talk with the teachers' union about it too, and if people have ideas, you know, to share them, but it's, it's a balance because, you know, we try to be as fiscally responsible as we can with our budget, and probably we could attract more if we paid, you know, $200 a day, but realistically, we, that would be a budget buster, quite honestly. So, but the principles are good, people are understanding, and they shuffle as best they can. So everybody pitches in. They do.
Is there any feedback from, from the union as far as maybe offering, offering our prep periods for subbing, or is that something that's done anyway?
We do. We do, particularly more so at the high school, that they will cover for a teacher who can't come in. A lot of times at our elementary schools, just because of the nature of the work they do, they have more instructional assistants around that allows, gives them a little more flexibility to reschedule. But the high school, we do utilize the prep periods. And the union is, you know, we, there's rarely a monthly meeting, and it's not brought up, but they're understanding of the situation that everyone is in, you know, everyone is talking about it. So it's, it's a challenge and our rates are competitive.
Definitely.
Yeah, and it's not like we want to start a bidding war amongst districts either.
Right. But based on what was in the paper, we're right up there with the best.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
I guess it just proves the point, we do need that long-term sub.
We do. We do. We do.
Well, any further discussion? Did I already get a motion on that?
I think we did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Before I go on to the upcoming events, I just wanted to share with you, so last, at the end of last school year, we had Mr. Fahey and his efforts to always stay ahead of things and do the right thing, had ordered a bulb crusher, and we were using that and to, with fluorescent lights, and then sending them to a company to be recycled as they should be. And then learned, when we were approached by Mass D E P, that that is not allowed to be done in Massachusetts, it has to just go directly from the school to a recycling, permanent recycling company. So they did come out and did a review. We have made all of the adjustments that needed to be made. In fact, even before we went in for our meeting, Mr. Fahey had already rectified all of the things, they were most impressed with that, and we will be signing a consent order just saying that we agree that we will make sure to comply with everything. So they're satisfied with that and that will go into the next week. So just wanted to make you aware.
Good.
And then finally, the upcoming events, Ryan reported on a couple of those, the escape room fundraiser, PAC has some classroom showcases, and always a nice event, the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony at the middle school will take place on the 17th, so that's always an exciting time. I happened to be at the middle school.
Changed to the 15th.
I'm sorry, it's changed to the 15th.
Because of Skeeple.
Okay. But I happened to be at the middle school the day that the kids were called down to get their letters, invited them to be a part of it, so that was pretty exciting for those kids. So great opportunity.
Great things happening.
Can I ask a question? What is a classroom showcase?
So what they do is they invite one or two members of the family to come in, and they actually, the kids, share with them some of the work that they're doing in their classrooms and things. It's an opportunity to get families to come in and see the good things that are happening.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Very nice.
The kids are very excited about it.
Oh, I bet they are.
It's about all of them.
Yes.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for that report. And now we'll move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Luzé?
So in a recent study, a survey that we sent out to our middle school and high school students, which was aimed at us understanding better some of their social-emotional needs, it came to our attention that many, many students, and this won't be a surprise, find homework to be anxiety-producing. So in a leadership discussion and with teachers as well in the union, we decided to create four no-homework long weekends that we're going to provide to families. These long weekends without the homework, we're hoping will provide more opportunities for families to spend time together, or if not that, for the older kids at least, to give them some, really just simply some downtime. So those weekends this year will be January 17th through the 21st, which is our Martin Luther King Long Weekend, February 14th through the 18th, which is on our break in February, the new March 14th to 18th Long Weekend, that's new to the calendar this year, will be another one, and May 23rd through the 27th, which is Memorial Day. And we think, and I bet you'll agree, that the students and the families will welcome this new practice that we'll put in place. So everybody's kind of excited to see the reaction we get.
Unless you tell them that it's to spend time with their family, they might say, "I'd rather do the homework." Right, Ryan?
Pens on some students, maybe.
Any other comments? Serious ones?
I did get a question of even math, only because these kids are so trained, they, every day, no matter what, they have to do math. So there has been a request made in the Kaufman household that even math is exempt from homework.
Even math. That's great.
Question, just because I've heard, I think technology is great. Have we heard anything, I think all their books now are on the iPads, are they downloaded onto there? Just thinking, I used to remember being a basketball, and while I'm waiting to, you know, go out, I'd be doing my homework. Are they still able to do that? Like now that they don't, if they have it on their iPad instead of a book? Do you need Wi-Fi access?
Well, actually, you probably do, yes. I'm just wondering. Coming anywhere the basketball game is, all our buildings would have an access point.
Through the chair, most of ours, I mean, there are some that are fully on the iPad, but we still provide textbooks.
If needed.
Yeah.
Okay. The students of choice, most of them are taking the iPad choice, but...
Oh, they do have that, okay.
Yep.
That just made me think, that's when I did my homework, when I played sports.
The Wi-Fi connection.
So in addition to the no-homework long weekends, we also will be showing a video coming up on January 22nd at the Auburn High School at 6:30 called Angst. This video was really created to bring awareness and open up a conversation around stress and anxiety that our kids feel, even beginning as young as the age of seven. So this presentation will be open to the entire community. We'll have John Matalman, who's from Minding Your Mind, and if you remember, he was also the presenter of The Secret Lives of Teens and Tweens, and he's going to come as well and afterwards hold a discussion and answer, have a question-and-answer period with parents in case they want more information. And then the following two days, that's January 22nd, so on January 23rd and 24th, all of our students in grades eight through 12 will also be shown this video with follow-up discussions by our guidance counselors. And it comes up later, but it just makes sense to talk about it now. The January 18th Half Professional Day is tied to that as well. Our entire staff will then watch the same video, the angst video. We're hoping that by broadening the awareness of our staff members, that we'll be able to identify these students sooner and provide the appropriate supports that they may need. So I think it's a very comprehensive effort at trying to address stress and anxiety with our students.
Through the chair, I thought it was great. When we did our school visits, when we went to Bryn Mawr, there was a classroom that was doing meditation yoga. And she said she does it like every day, just to settle the kids and...
After recess, yeah, that was cute.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's such a good idea. Great practice to start early.
I agree.
As you know, we're going several audits in the district, so based on that, the Department of Elementary Ed and Secondary Ed spent yesterday, and most of today with us, as part of their review of special education. They again went through numerous documents, they interviewed the Special Education Parent Advisory Council Chairperson, and they also interviewed Mrs. Reedy, our Director of People's Services. And then at the end of the day today, I was able to sit down during their exit debrief, and I'm just thrilled to be able to report to you that they said Auburn was a great place to visit, they really felt welcome here, which was great. They also commended the district on the writing of their individual education plans, saying that in many districts where they go, they're boilerplate. Here, they were genuinely individualized, and that there was a tone to our documents, whether it was the plan itself or the progress reports that went home to parents, that really conveyed that they knew their students and that they cared about their students. And I think that goes a long way, talking about what we do here in Auburn. So I'd like to say kudos to Mrs. Reedy and the entire special education team, because they really, really strive for excellence, and that was awesome to hear that. So they'll give us a formal report within 45 school days, and of course, you know, there'll always be something minor that we'll need to work on or tweak, but from what I got from that exit interview, they were really pleased with what they've found here at Auburn.
That's something that all of our teachers, actually all of our staff should be proud of. That really means a lot. They're not just filling out a template.
Right.
They're personalizing it. And we've been claiming that that's what we do, and we know that that's what we do, but to have a group of our peers come in and say the same thing, it definitely means a lot.
That's great. And in terms of our best-practice preschool grant, this will be the last year of it. And if you recall, it's kind of been focused on collaborating with the other area preschools locally and then at other nearby neighborhoods and districts. And we've kind of focused a lot on sharing best practices as a group, but also providing some professional development to all of the staffs, and then some cultural events for families. So this year, we'll offer four professional development sessions, each one on a different topic. Last year was all-around literacy, but this year, we've decided to do four different topics. Those topics are welcoming, creating welcoming and inclusive classroom environments, language development in preschool children, universal design for learning, and fostering relationships. There'll be a different presenter for each of those sessions, and it will be open to all area preschool staff. In addition to that, as part of this grant, the Tanglewood Marionettes will be presenting the Fairy Circus on Saturday, March 9th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning for all preschool-aged children and their families. We invite their siblings to come as well. This year will be held at Packer Chalk School. The event is free. We hope you can spread the word because we want to fill that cafeteria. I already talked about the January 18th half-day, and just finally, I just want to remind everyone that the pre-K and K registration... remind everyone that the pre-K and K registration for the 2019-2020 school year will take place on February 6th. That will take place from 3:00 to 7:00 at the high school in the presentation room, and parents are reminded to bring students' birth certificates and proof of residency documents to that registration.
Great. Thank you for that report, Dr. Lozay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to business and financial.
Thank you. So on behalf of Mrs. Worsbicky, I share with you a year-to-date budget report that she has run on January 3rd. We continue to monitor the budget on a regular basis, and we feel we are in good, good shape. There are some transfers that we request your approval on, many are within the same series, but there are some between the 6,000, 3,000, 2,000, 1,000, and 4,000 series, and it is my recommendation that you approve those as recommended.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented by Superintendent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
And then finally, Mrs. Worsbicky and Mr. Bouvier did considerable work. It was time to renew the, or start a new lease for our copiers across the district. As noted in the memo from Mrs. Worsbicky and Mr. Bouvier, it is a recommendation that you approve a lease agreement with RICO, and I would recommend the same.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the lease agreement for the copiers in the district with RICO.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. We now move on to policies.
So the two policies there, IP-A and IP-B, are on second reading, and it is my recommendation that you approve those as noted.
I would entertain that motion. Don't let you up again.
I know, make a motion to approve the policies IPA and IPB on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Through the chair, I just noticed a typo in the title, supplement, not supplant, but supplant has three Ps.
Thank you very much, we will remove one of those Ps, thank you.
With all that reading you've done tonight, I'm surprised that you caught it.
Yeah.
My grandmother was an English teacher, what can I say?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. And we do need an executive session this evening.
We do, as noted on the superintendent's memo.
So I would entertain that motion.
I shall make a motion that we enter into executive session from US General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21a2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, there's a vote. Good night, everyone.